So, welcome to the Pembroke School Committee meeting for Tuesday, January 30th, 2024. Would you all stand with me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so at this time, we are going to say hello to, we have some visitors here with us today. We have the, hopefully, the boys soccer team, track and field, and Jim, teacher Jim Rooney, and I'm gonna leave it to Eric to...
Yep, so I don't see the boys soccer team, so I'm gonna start with some of the track accolades. So first, we have Sarah Claflin here tonight. She's in the back with her mom and dad. I see them back there. One of my favorite Pembroke families. So Sarah is the All-State champion in the 100 meters with the time of 12 minutes and 1 seconds, which is the fastest time in Massachusetts this year.
Woo!
This follows in 2023 her indoor All-State 55-meter title. She is, I think, probably one of the most dedicated track athletes we've had in a while. I know that Coach Rooney and Coach Sapati are, you know, huge fans of hers. We are so excited for Sarah. I believe Sarah's going to the University of Connecticut in the fall for track and field, so we have a picture to get for you, Sarah. Do you all want to take a picture with Sarah? That would be great.
It's up to Sarah.
See, they're all of us are in the... All of you, take your picture with Sarah. There you go. Thank you. Are you ready? And speaking of track and field, we are also honored by the presence of Jim Rooney over here. Jim was inducted in the 2023 MSTCA Coaches Hall of Fame. That follows many-year titles as the Boston Globe and MSTCA Coach of the Year awards. We are so fortunate to not only have him as a track coach, but also as a PE and wellness teacher at the high school. So thanks, Jim. You also got our signature! Yeah, of course, do the picture.
Do you have a team photo?
Yep, don't forget to... So to both Sarah and to Jim, it is riveting content, but you do not have to stay. I totally understand and appreciate.
So, hey, can I, just one quick thing, because I think it's important. Coach Rooney, I, I, I think it's, it's a great, first of all, it's a great honor and congratulations. You so deserve it, right? But for all of you out there who either have kids coming into Pembroke High School, are about to enter Pembroke High School, these coaches give everything, every fiber of their being, every ounce of energy they have. They want to throttle and kill our kids sometimes, and that's not a bad thing. But I can tell you from experience, my two daughters joined track and field and joined, one was soccer and then went to track and field. The other walked in as a freshman scared to death. Both of them are about to get their graduate degrees in May, and they regularly say, "I would not be where I am if it wasn't for Coach Rooney and Coach Sapati." You guys change lives, and, and I hope you know that, right? What you do is really important for our kids, so thank you.
Excellent. Boys soccer is coming, but they're not going to be until 6:15.
All right.
So just power through.
Power through.
Okay, so, um, so I have a little bit of communications, and I just want to let everybody know how this runs. If you want to speak, you need to sign in on this sheet right up here. Um, there's going, I'm gonna have a little something to say, just a quick statement, and then we're gonna have 15 minutes of public comment only, and Natalie's gonna keep track for us.
Yep, Natalie will keep the time for the two minutes.
No more than two minutes per person. We have a lot of work to do, so we're gonna do like the first 15 minutes and then move on. So if you'd like to speak again, feel free to sign in, but I'm gonna say a few words, so. So, after a very difficult couple of weeks, I thought it was very important that I make a statement to all of those who have counted under me to look over your children's education over the last three years. Many of you have supported me but disagree with my most recent decision to try to have a discussion on how to make our classrooms politically and socially neutral. So for those who feel this applies to them, there are a couple of important points that I'd like to highlight. It's really important to me that I model behavior to students, and especially my own children, but to students, that when you have a divisive conversation with people you care about, you should always try to find common ground and look at your own culpability in the situation. Even if you vehemently disagree with me, I care about your opinions and the well-being of your children. I have no hate in my heart for any of you, because I know that for the most part, you are passionate because you care deeply. So with that in mind, I want to start by admitting where I wish I had done better. You may not have agreed with my draft ideas. In fact, looking back on it, I should never have shared any of my ideas until I got to this table with my four colleagues. We may have had a more productive conversation, because honestly, when I take out the judgment and the vitriol that went along with some of the criticism of my proposals, I can see the errors. Having teachers wear pins that would out themselves was definitely short-sighted and clearly not my best idea. It honestly was never my intent. Also, asking administration to keep a log of students who wanted flags in common areas and having school committee approval, again, not my best idea. But again, I want to open up a conversation about, I wanted to open up a conversation about how to attempt a neutral classroom. This policy was not ever going to be voted on. It was supposed to be a list of ideas, and I should never have shared it until we were in a position to have a productive conversation. One community member who happens to be a teacher in a different district stood up and commented that we need to trust teachers. This is my biggest regret, making teachers feel that I don't trust them. I honestly believe that 95% of the teachers are amazing and trustworthy. In that 95%, there are even some teachers that I know think differently than me politically, but I trust them 100% with teaching my children. I've seen them in action, able to think creatively in order to reach every child in a positive way regardless of the child's cultural background. Uh, I'm asking all of you, including my fellow committee members, regardless of where you stand on this issue, please, let's lay down our swords. Let's come together as a community to move forward. If you disagree with me, I ask you to consider that this issue about neutrality in the classroom space is not just one person's view. I promise you that there are many people in the community who feel this way. This conversation was very important to all of them, and I have a duty to represent everyone in the community. I know you heard administrators say that there have only been two complaints, but I have personally heard a lot more than two complaints from people who were afraid to speak up. These people exist. You even heard from a couple of brave students who stood up to speak against a crowd of angry people. Please know that there are several more students just like them, and I'm asking you to have compassion for all students, even if you don't agree with them. I ask, I ask this of everyone to consider. How can we reach out to others in the community so we can have peace? Please know that I advocate for every single child in the school whenever someone comes to me with any issue. Many of you know this because I've actually advocated for your child personally. I've sat in living rooms to listen to concerns, and I've gone to bat to make sure your children are treated appropriately in the schools. Those of you who have experienced this can attest. This passion does not change based on the child's needs, whether LGBTQ+, learning disabilities, 504 plans, backing bullying initiatives in our schools, special education services of any kind, championing, championing the idea of having cords for various clubs, and more. It is for this reason that I stood before you on the 16th to present my concerns. I want to stand up for students who feel they need to shrink to the back of the classroom. I will do this for all of your children, including those who identify as LGBTQ+ or otherwise. I know many of you are disappointed about how the conversation went on Tuesday, especially the students and families that felt they wanted neutrality. But I want to highlight the good news. We did identify that we are lacking communication to our student body and families about how to anonymously message our administrators when there is a problem. That has not been clear to everyone, and we can do better communicating. So if your student, student is being bullied, if a teacher or administrator does something that you're not comfortable with, if your student is being pressured to participate in something you feel is against your cultural beliefs, you have a way to report this anonymously. And our administrators have already said that they plan to do a better job of communicating this to students and parents. Titan Talk is on our website homepage, and you can click on this link to report anything. This is really good news. We need to move forward because there's a lot of work to do. So I'm gonna ask all of my committee members from this point forward to please, let's set aside any differences we have about this issue and move forward as one body for the good of this community and our children. We need to focus on the budget. We have a lot of important discussions to have over the next few months. I'm ready to put in the work, and I hope we can all do this together and move forward.
Just want to go on in a moment, see if anybody has any comments before I move to public comment.
I just wanted to thank you for saying that. I mean, I know that there was no malice in your heart. I mean, I know you. And I think that you had every good intention with what you were trying to do. I think it was, you know, unfortunately, as you, as you said, it wasn't presented in the right way, came off, came off bad. But I'm glad you, I'm glad you said that, and I agree with you that we need to move forward.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike. David?
Sorry, we get to do two things here. Honestly, I'd like to apologize to the group. I was not here for that meeting due to some extenuating family circumstances, and if anyone wants to talk to me about it, that's fine. I have a lot of respect, Sue, for what you did. I understand. I did watch the meeting later on. I'm proud to say I'm from Pembroke, and I think most of you are too. And I think we've got some far left, some far right, but at some point, we have to meet in the middle. And if you look at this job the way I do, it starts with the kids, what's best for the kids. Then I like to think what's best for the schools, the teachers, the administrators, and I don't want to say lastly in any particular order, but then it's about the parents. So, I would like you all, you may not agree with everything we say. You may agree with some of the things we say, I'm not sure. But realize we're making the decisions based on kids. There's no political agenda here. None of us get paid to be here. We volunteer our time. We talk to the people in CVS and Stop &amp; Shop and all those wonderful places downtown, and we hear both sides of every issue. I was joking when I came in that I can't go to Stop &amp; Shop because my frozen food melts by the time I get to the counter, okay? So, again, thank you. I admire the fact that there's this many people here getting involved. I'd love to see you all come to other meetings when we talk about things like the budget and classrooms and courses. Don't stand on one issue. Don't be afraid to get involved. And again, thank you.
Allison?
I wasn't really expecting to say anything, but, I mean, I've, all along, I'm here to work and to put the time in. That's never changed from any meeting, one meeting, one topic. I mean, I think you've seen how much time, you know, so I'm, I'm here. I definitely would like to be able to, you know, do the work, whatever that looks like, however that looks like. You know, I love to see people here. I think it's important. Nothing changes on my end, so I'm still here, still doing the work.
Hey, um, thank you, right? Is probably the first thing I'm gonna say. It's not, what you did is not easy, and I tip my hat. I firmly respect what you did. So, thank you. You know, I said it that night, and I'll say it again. I've known you for a long time. You've been a friend of mine for a long time. I know that you have a very strong value system, and it is not one that comes from a place of darkness at all, right? So, I think what you said, you did, I think you did it very well. I appreciate you doing it too. We do have a lot of work to do. I mean, you and I sat in a budget meeting yesterday, and I think for all of us, we as a community need to come together. We need to work together for the betterment of the kids, for the betterment of families, and for the betterment of classrooms. We've got some tough decisions to make over the next couple of months, and I'd love all of you to be here when we're making those decisions around budget and financials and some of the hard earned, dry out topics. But that remains to be seen. But I'm here, I'm in, I'm in with you, and I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so, I'm just gonna grab the sign in sheet. So, we have two people who signed in, and if anybody else needs to sign in, I think there's another sheet there. No?
Go with the two.
Yeah, so I'll just go with the two. So, Paige Graziano.
Hi, guys. I'm Paige Graziano. I'm gonna take this down so you can hear me a little bit better. I'm really excited, actually, to come to you guys today, because I wanted to talk about Latin, which was my plan to talk about last time, but that didn't happen. I know, Allison, you're very strongly pro-Latin, as am I. I'm wondering if there has been any movement on ideas about how to keep Latin in the schools.
The mics don't amplify in the room. They just are for PAC TV for the recording.
I will speak as loudly as I can with my laryngitis. I'm wondering if there's been any movement on the Latin issue. If I recall, it was Latin III and IV that were in debate, and there was also a question about the number of students in, was it French IV? I'm wondering if it's at all possible for those classes to combine and do some kind of online program such that there's one teacher supervising and guiding them to combine class space and potentially still be able to offer it, or if there are other ideas on the table.
Thank you. And then Steve Sissiati, if you'd like to come up.
Hello, everyone. Hope you can hear me. I just wanted to say, Sue, I think your statement was absolutely excellent. I really appreciate the statement. I think we all do. I think we are all ready to kind of move forward. I do want to say that your statement that you just made personally, I find it to be a testament to your leadership, because leadership is about, you know, a number of different things, but two of them are, you know, being willing to stick your neck out and really give people a voice that maybe don't really have as much of a voice. And the other side of it, though, too, is to, you know, for us all to acknowledge our missteps and kind of take ownership of what those are in order to grow as individuals, as a community, to Patrick's point, et cetera, as well. So, I just wanted to thank you again. I appreciate the voice that you gave me and fellow community members. It looks like that, you know, we've only got a couple people, Paige and yourself, for example. We had a lot of people kind of show up tonight. I think some were expecting to speak, and they're not. But if, just anyone here who's in support of Sue, if you could stand up, I think, I think it would help to really show Sue that we really appreciate, you know, what you've done.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You're all amazing. Appreciate it. All right. No, is nobody else would like to talk?
Yep, you gotta come up.
Gotta come up to the mic. Good two minutes. Only have fifteen minutes, and then we have a second person. Just when you get up to the mic, just state your name and, you know.
My name is Vincent Cogliano, and I want to talk about last night's budget meeting. Despite some of the feelings in the room, I think we made some really good progress last night. I'm very pleased with what I saw. I'd like to see the Board of Selectmen have representatives with the school committee and continue this process for a couple of reasons. I thought the numbers you presented last night were excellent. I thought the town manager was too. I think I see some of the sticking points that we have. But without communication between these boards, we're never gonna solve this problem. We're in a crisis in this town right now. I've never seen numbers as bad as what I'm seeing and revenue shortfalls and money that's not going to be coming in for the next few years. So, we get some really tough decisions, and we need to stick together and support ideas as tough as they are and decisions that are very tough to keep our community, you know, at least on a level where we're producing services for the residents, for the students, for the schools, for everybody. And without that communication, we're not going to have it. So, even after this budget process is over, I hope that we can continue to see the Board of Selectmen and School Committee meet maybe every six weeks just to discuss issues, get to know the issues that you're all facing so that we can work together to solve them. And that's all I have to say. I think it's a worthwhile thing, and the meeting last night I thought was excellent.
Thank you, Vince.
Thanks, Vince.
Just got some obstacles.
Hi, I'm Marielle McCann. One concern that I have is I hear everyone saying they want to move forward at the same time saying that they want to continue the neutrality in the classroom. It feels like that's still happening, even though I think we all decided that we didn't want to continue that, and it was kind of a waste of time. So, that's my only concern here, is I'm hearing both sides of that talk, and I don't, I don't want to continue with that neutrality, or whatever we're calling it at this point. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Don?
Yeah, my, my name is Don Bryant. I'm on Mountain Avenue. Yeah, it takes a lot of energy and courage and love to go through these meetings, for sure. With response to what was just said, as you know and as she said, the issue has not been settled, done the way forward. That's still out there to face and how we're gonna work through it. I was particularly disappointed in the way the meeting ended. It began with you wanting a conversation with the school committee, which usually happens with just a few people here. The way it ended was by another committee member taking up your conversation piece and making it a motion so it could put the nail in the coffin and stop the conversation, when that's exactly what we need, is to have that conversation on all parts, everybody. It's not just a one-meeting deal. It's on the table now. And I trust that we all have the courage, the love, the patience, the kindness to go the next steps that we need to go and continue with what you wanted, which is a conversation. And I think, I think that conversation is going to happen. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight?
So, I have one thing to say, because I just want to correct the record. Our agenda for that evening had a possible motion on the agenda. That motion was read, is close to, from memory, is it appeared on the agenda. So, it was a hundred percent appropriate.
Is there any, any other? And we needed to be able to move on, and I told the town that I was going to go with, you know, how the town felt, and that's where we landed.
Hundred percent. Yeah, no, no, it's not directed to you at all.
So, if there are any other comments, we're going to move on to some really happy stuff. This boys soccer team is here, and, and I think that this is called for a celebration, right?
Huge.
This is gonna be a big picture. She's going, oh, we have somebody who's gonna read the names, so.
You should probably acknowledge Brian for the great job he's done.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's done a good job for us.
Absolutely.
He's a student athlete.
Yes. So...
Can I speak this up?
So, though I've spent all day practicing their names, I'm gonna hand it to Brian, for our athletic director, so we can do the honors.
Well, first off, welcome. Obviously, here's our Fall 2023 Pembroke Boys varsity soccer team. A tremendous season, of course, but back-to-back-to-back official division champions in '21, '22, and '23, what is tremendous. They sustained that competitive excellence for a great period of time. Most importantly, though, is the kids in the room right now. These student athletes are tremendous. Although they've had success, they have such high character. And I always go back to the final game where they played Norwell in the state finals at Situate. I get back to my car. I get ready to write up the tweet of the final score. I didn't even want to put the score on that tweet. I just want to talk about the kids, because they're that awesome of human beings. They mean so much one in the game of soccer. They represent what Pembroke Athletics should be about, and I'm just so proud of this group and our coach, Coach Sir Adam Scott. So, give a round of applause for our boys. All right, I'm gonna call up some names. If you want to come up and get your certificate of excellence. First up is our captain, Joe D'Angelo.
Next, our captain, Matt McAuliffe. Our next captain, Will McManus. We have another captain, Quinn Riley. Next senior, Miles Bartolotti. He had a work. We have his brother, Senior Owen. Next is a senior who's not here is Tom Haller-Renix on our boys basketball team. Senior and fan favorite, Alex Herman. Our juniors, we have Shane Crowley, who's a captain. Junior captain who just came from the wrong school, went to Hobnmark, Jack Dupree. Junior Gabe Lamar. And his brother Luke Lamar is not here, but certificate. We have another junior, Gabe Rushing. And our last junior, Caleb Pratt. All righty, our sophomore is Grayson Glass. Next sophomore, Jack Ivedesian.
Ivedesian?
No, Jack. Owen Rushing? Yes. Our next sophomore, Michael Marcelle. He's at basketball. Freshman, Tommy McAuliffe. And our last freshman and our final person on our roster, Dylan Baldwin. All right, well, that'll wrap it up. Once again, our head coach is Adam Scott. This is your 2023 state runner-up. If anyone want to come up, we're gonna get a picture in the back, all the way in the back.
Let's go, guys.
straight. Here we go. One, two, three. Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's an amazing group.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Hey, Brian, don't go anywhere for a second. I want to take two minutes out. Brian, how long have you been with us now?
Year four.
Year four.
That's it, Brian.
I have to tell you a funny story. A friend of mine handed me Brian's resume and said, "You may want to take a look at this guy." And the joke was, he had done some time at Springfield College as an undergraduate. I went to Springfield College. I'll put a plug in for Patrick's daughter, who is graduating with her doctorate degree from Springfield College. And I looked at what I call the pedigree of this man, and I said, "Why in heaven's name does this guy want to come from the colleges he's been to, to Pembroke?" And he started telling me his family was from here, his wife's family, the whole thing. And I said, "All right, this guy's for real." And I said, "Aaron..." And what he's done in four years is absolutely amazing. And the thing, and I'm not sure if you caught it, he referred to the kids as student athletes. It's not Joey's a soccer player, Tommy's a track-and-field person. They're student athletes. And we care about their character, we care about their grades, we care about them as people, and certainly as athletes. But this young man has done a hell of a job, and I think he deserves a round of applause. Brian, thank you.
Great call out, Dave. All right, now, we're moving on with the work. So there's no adjustments to the agenda, except for the one we already had. The warrants are being circulated, and we're on to the superintendent's report.
Sure. So under my report is the three budget presentations for this evening. As we have done in years past, we will be doing elementary first, then middle school, then high school, just to set the stage a little bit. Obviously, I'm not unaware of the fiscal situation in town, being part of those budget things and those conversations. But when we develop our budgets at this level, what we talk about at the administrative table is, you know, as a building administrator or as a department head, what do you need to move your department or your school forward? So these presentations and budget requests are made almost in a silo or a vacuum, individually thinking about moving the education in that building or in that department forward. Understandably, we know that there are wish list items at time. And when we're completed all 11 budget presentations, we come to you with a list of everything that was asked, we put it in priority order, and we talk through what we're able to move forward as priority one, priority two, or priority three. We don't want folks in the audience or who are watching at home to think that we're, you know, tone deaf to the fact that there is a fiscal issue in town. There are some requests in these budgets, but they will go through the whole process and prioritize as we get towards the end. So with that, the elementary folks are going to start first.
Okay, so just like the superintendent just mentioned, this work is kind of done in a silo, you know, at the very beginning. Mr. Bambry, Mrs. Simmons, and I sat down on multiple occasions, and we talk about the needs for our schools. So what we're about to kind of go over with you speaks to the kind of the collectiveness of all three elementary schools and what our needs are. And how do we get there? Is we take a look at data trends, we take a look at, you know, speaking to our teachers, to our school councils, and then we put all this together, and then we come up with a budget presentation. So that's what you're about to see right now. So with that being said, we're going to go over some enrollment figures, we're going to go over some historical information, get into that data piece I just spoke about, and then kind of set our 2025 budget priorities. And these are those things that would make our schools the best that they could possibly be in our eyes and after speaking to all the stakeholders involved. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bambry.
So what you're looking at right now is our current enrollment. So you have Bryantville with grade served K-6, current enrollment 441, 22 home rooms with Hobymock, K-6 also, total enrollment of 398 with 21 home rooms. North Pembroke, it's pre-K to six, we have 514 total enrollment, we have 23 K-6 home rooms, and we have four pre-K home rooms. So when you look at this year, it breaks it down by kindergarten through sixth grade, and you look at the totals once again, and you have your class sizes averaging anywhere from 18 to 24. You can see when you look at Bryantville, all the homeroom teachers, there's three groups. They have one group in second grade with four home teachers. At Hobymock, you have three grade teachers across the board with a total of 21 home rooms. At North Pembroke, we have 23 home rooms, and we have two classes with larger sizes. So you see grade one and grade three. We have four teachers. So when you project that forward to next year, we're looking at an expected 433 students in Bryantville with the same amount of teachers in a homeroom. We have 396 in Hobymock with the same amount of homeroom teachers, and we have 432 with the same amount of homeroom teachers in North Pembroke.
So historically, over the past few years, our focus has been on increasing the social emotional supports and some of the academic initiatives based on the latest science and research on how to best support our students. So we had asked for a full-time social worker at each elementary building. This has since happened. We started our Titan Lab program at each elementary school, which required having a full-time paraprofessional in order to serve as like the home base for that classroom, which we've been able to do. And this year, we started the implementation of the most up-to-date second step program across the elementary schools. To support the academics, we were able to finally have a full-time reading specialist at each building, and that has been a great benefit because aside from supporting more students with that time, they are also able to take a major lead role in the data collection and then using that data to help support teachers and coach them on instructional groupings and best being able to individualize instruction to meet the students' needs. In addition to that, we have also, based on the science of reading research, we've been providing professional development to the teachers. We've chosen a program called Ufly, which K-2 is using to support the phonics. We've adopted DIBELS as a screening tool, so the reading specialists, they just completed the SWAT team approach at Bryantville, where all the reading specialists have been at Bryantville to give all the K-2 students this screener. They actually went to three, and I think we might be getting up to four. They're able to expand who we're working with. But then it provides data for the reading specialist and the teacher to know who requires some, you know, tier-two instruction, maybe outside of the classroom but still within, and then how to form the instruction within the classroom as well. We've increased the intervention of ELA, the Eye Ready Program at grades three to five, and then we started the No Red Ink Program at grade six. Our science curriculum continues to look at the Open Saiet Initiative. This is right now at grade six, it's at the middle school, and then sort of on its way down. We started out by just doing one unit, and then last year we did two, and now grade six up to three. I know at Bryantville, we're starting the Forces of, is it Forces? It's not Forces of Nature. It's Forces of something. Starting tomorrow. Starting tomorrow. They're all excited. They just built speakers. They're doing really cool things. And then as far as the reading, just some data to support the greatness of having a full-time reading specialist at each building. This just shows the numbers of students we've been able to support using them over the past few years. The Bryantville and North numbers at this point have kindergarten, but it's not in a pullout setting. The kindergartners have not been dibbled yet to see like what their exact needs are at, because they start the year in kindergarten, the assessment doesn't take place till this time of year. But what our reading specialists were doing was they were going in the classroom. So they were coaching within the classroom, doing some lessons within the classroom, pulling some small groups for students they identified within the classroom. But after this round of DIBELS that just took place, it'll be more structured where the instruction will be targeted based on the screening tool, who really needs the intervention, and those students will start to get pulled in the small groups. And that's what's going to happen at Hobymock as well, moving forward. So thank you for fulfilling all her historical priorities. And now, along to your house.
So moving right along, we developed our, what I've heard people calling it a wish list up there, in between our Tier 1S and our Tier 2S. So the Tier 1S are those things that we feel as though we have a common understanding of the need in our buildings. So that continuation, just like Mrs. Simmons was talking about, the continuation of the science of reading, we do have a brand-new curriculum. It's called Ufly. We want to make sure that we're using that with fidelity, so we want to have ongoing professional development around that program. It's been off to a great start in all three buildings, and there's a lot of love for the program as well from our teachers, which is actually, as administrators, that really makes us happy. It makes our work a little bit easier as well. So we'd like to continue that and have that targeted, ongoing professional development. And then moving on, just as we were doing some literacy work, we do feel at this point in time, a math interventionist is needed at the elementary level. So very similar to the way that our literacy specialist, our reading specialist works right now, being able to work with groups of, small groups of kids with math difficulties that are not performing in the class and that we would like to see them at that level. Built into that, we'd also like to see that math person do some coaching with our elementary school teachers to give them some ideas for differentiated instruction in order to make really great gains in the area of math. Also, under our Tier 1S would be as far as the social-emotional curriculum for pre-K through grade six. We have an annual subscription. We're asking for that to go one more year, at least one more year. It's been very well received as well. So we'll have some monetary figures in the presentation on the next slide you can take a look at as well. And then continue on with our rollout of open Saiet for grade six. We do need some more professional development around that as we are growing into that program. And there was some thought that it may actually dwindle down into the K-5 realm eventually as well. So some more ongoing professional development around there. Our Tier 2S would be about, if we weren't able to get the 1.0 math specialist, we'd actually be asking for a half-time employee in each of the buildings to replicate the model we're currently running right now with literacy. And then also, we would love to have an additional half-time employee for literacy as well, as the demands are increasing, as you're seeing through the data points in front of you today, there is a need for that as well. So that would be our Tier 2S. So moving on to our requests and the dollar figures that correspond to those requests. So in Pembroke, our average salary for a full-time employee at the teaching level is about $70,000. So because we do have three elementary schools, you're going to see that we are requesting three full-time math specialists at the tune of $210,000, and the justification is right there on the right. The social-emotional curriculum, it's an annual subscription, just under $7,000. This enables each and every classroom within the elementary school pre-K all the way up to grade six to have full access to that entire program, and this is done on a weekly basis in all three of our elementary buildings. In addition to that, there's some DIBELS scoring program. It's an electronic program that really is able to drill down and find groupings. It's able to do a lot of the extra legwork and help teachers, give them a little bit more time to work with students. So it drills down, so there's some additional scoring programs and scoring software that we'd be looking to purchase as well. That's listed right there as well. The Fish Tank Subscription is also part of our literacy work in grades K through three, and that is actually supplementing some of the reading strategies that we're actually using within our classrooms K through three at this point in time. So we're asking for that as well. As far as science subscriptions for kindergarten through grade five, we're looking to supplement some of the teacher-led materials that we already have in buildings, just so we can have more commonality among all three buildings. So the two programs that we identified were Mystery Science and Generation Genius, which are all tied to the Massachusetts Frameworks. So it's really easy for us to be able to implement with the help of visuals within the classroom. So this is something that our teachers are doing on a daily basis with our kids. So we're looking to actually formalize that and to have the three programs, I'm sorry, the two programs in all three of our buildings. So when all is said and done, the total ask at the elementary level that we're having is $253,107, all in the needs, to benefit the needs of the children. And that finalizes our presentation. Any questions from the committee?
Great. Thank you. I'm going to stock down here with Mike. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, first of all, thank you guys for coming here tonight and presenting this to us. I know it's one of those kind of awkward meetings, but actually, this brings me back to when I first got on the school committee. I think these were like my first, my first meetings, these budget meetings. But a couple of questions I have. The full-time math interventionist, if, you know, there's the budget constraints, and I know this is just a wish list right now, you were saying addition of a, if we couldn't do the full-time at each elementary, you want to talk about a half-time math interventionist at each school. Would you, would it be possible to do like a full-time that could travel between the three schools? Is that doable? Or is that, you know, each has a schedule, each school, is at each school certain days?
I guess that would be a Tier 3 if we had one. So yes, I mean, when you take a look at three elementary schools, it is difficult for a person to transition from one building to all three of them, to be honest with you. So there's, you know, it takes 15 minutes from one side of town to get to the other. You talk about teacher prep times, and there's a lot of other things we need to consider as well, as well as the already set schedules for our individual buildings. It would be, it would be difficult to do. I would never turn it away. But I do feel as though at least the half-time model would benefit the elementaries better.
Okay. And the DIBELS scoring system, is that, that's what you're talking about too? That basically groups the kids together to decide, like, see which kids would go in which, like, interventionist group or what have you?
Yeah. So last year, we started DIBELS, but we didn't have the scoring part, and Ashley Cross at HABO tried to replicate like the best she could, because you have to put in all the data for every single kid, based on every subtest that each kid takes, and then it takes all that and puts them in their zone. And we did it, but it wasn't great, and it wasn't perfect, and it was very time-consuming. So just take that off of the reading specialist's plate and allow them to just be able to get all the kids, the three of them literally are spending the next few days and weeks going to each building and screening every single kindergartner through third grader, if not more. So this program just sort of allows them to feed the information.
Yeah, so kind of streamline it and make it more accurate?
Yeah. And then it's across the three schools. It's exactly the same. So there's no like, well, this is how it is at Bryantville, and this is how it is at Hobymock. It's like exactly the same. The data's the same, the groupings are coming from the same information. So it's just really to help it streamline it and make it more efficient.
Okay.
Now, let's freeze up the interventionists who actually do work with the kids rather than doing, you know, crunching the numbers.
Yeah, all right. And the last question I have too deals with student, number of students. Trying to see where the page was. Here we go. I'm looking, there seems to be, in most of the schools, I'm just seeing if this is a reason to be optimistic, the kindergarten classes that you're projecting for next year look larger than we've seen. And I think last year, we talked about this, it looked like there was kind of a bubble that we were going through, and I'm wondering if we're towards the end of that?
Yeah, so we're just starting the kindergarten registration process. You know, what we use for the baseline number for the projection is the average of where we've been in previous years. If you, some of the data that I presented last night at the budget subcommittee just shows kind of the historical kindergarten enrollments, you know, this, it could ever flow a little bit over the next couple of months, and we'll refine the numbers as we get through the process. That's really a march or so process. And before the budget is finalized, we'll know a better idea of the kindergarten numbers.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have, yeah.
Great, thanks.
That's it. Thank you, guys.
David?
First and foremost, thank you. As always, I know this is a wonderful time of year, a great thing to do. I don't have any questions there. I've sat through quite a few of these. So again, every year, I'm just marveling what you guys are able to do and come up with. And again, I call it that one first need scenario, and let's see what we can do. But thank you.
Dave, just say your questions were already taken.
Allison? So DIBELS, because I know this is a question I've had with my own kid, too. So, you know, I think a lot of us parents are used to the DRA. So will there be something that this new program gives us parents other than an internal data that you guys collect? Because I know with my kids having, I know it's, you know, not used anymore here, but that data for like knowing kind of, okay, first, you know, beginning of first grade, end of first grade. So will we, as parents, get something like that with this program with DIBELS?
So the actual information from DIBELS is not necessarily shared because it's a screener. It's not an assessment, so you can't really look at the data and correlate it in that manner, like that, you know, oh, if you're yellow, then you're a one, and if you're red, then you're, you know, it doesn't match that way. And the reading specialists feel very strongly about making sure that that doesn't happen. But with that being said, there are parent reports that they're happy to share, all of the the information. There's reports that they can easily speak to at conferences. And as far as really understanding the standards of where your student is and according to grade level, it's, that work went to the report card. So once we shifted to the science of reading thinking, it required adjustments to the report card as well. So really seeing the report card and then the information that the teacher has to support the work on the report card, that four, three, two, one is really going to be the best spot for the parent to learn like where their students at kind of in conjunction to the
So there needs to be a little bit of an education, communication to tell us parents that, hey, you're not going to be getting letters or grade average, you know, like grade level averages anymore. Because I know that's going to be, at least on my end, like a mind shift change to not look at it.
I'm hearing kind of rumblings right now from our literacy specialists about actually doing some more parent meetings with parents in the early spring, just around what you're talking about.
Yeah, because I know that the meeting that was held at the high school, that last, I don't know whatever that was, that was pretty well attended. And that was, you know, so I do think having more education for the parents, because, you know, I feel like I'm fairly well informed and I still don't understand it. So, you know, I think having it be across, you know, the grade levels for kids who don't need the reading intervention, but to still know that your kid's at grade level, you know, I understand, you know, it's on the report card and stuff, but, you know, I don't know. I just, that safety net is good, I think. And then just a little bit with the math. So for, you know, for a while, because of the COVID money, there were the tutors. Is this kind of that model or is this different? And then, you know, is it, you know, I know with UFL, you know, there's a way to look at it with fidelity. Is this, is there a way to do the same with math?
I would consider the assimilation to the COVID funding, that was more of a stocked-out measure to kind of put, you know, as much as we support as we could in a very, with a group of students that were really kind of in danger if you were at that point in time. The math coaching, if you will, or the specialists, they'd be actually doing a lot of the same work as the literacy specialists, you know, basing their information on the data that we have within these programs. I'm talking in, being part of the staff and talking to the classroom teachers that come in planning meetings and things like that, in order to really get a better idea of who we need to be servicing. So, and I think that that servicing could be more of a 68-week time period and then like a reevaluation period. So it's much more structured, I think, than what we were using for the COVID money.
And it would be, just like with UFL, there's some way to do it truly with fidelity and not, because I worry about like, you know, the idea of having one person go between buildings, like there's no way that could be done truly with fidelity if we're going to, you know, I don't know, I just, if we're going to, yeah, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I did have a couple of questions, but we have a lot of people here tonight and we don't always have this many. So I want to take just a couple of questions about not just what you've shown for enrollment, but enrollment in general. I mean, we've seen our enrollment decline, there's absolutely no doubt. One of the things Aaron did last night was present at, we had a joint budget subcommittee last night, present five years' worth of enrollment and class size data. So while our enrollment has dropped, our class sizes have stayed reasonably the same, which means there have been reductions made. So there's been, since fiscal year 2020, 13.6 teaching reductions that have been made as a result of enrollment in lower enrollment, which is about a million dollar reduction in the base. The good news is that we were able to keep class sizes in a pretty good way, which you're seeing here. Our philosophy for the last 15, 16, maybe even 20 years has been a K through two class size, we strive to be 22 or under. Those are kids that are just starting the learning environment. They're just starting, you know, to understand the basics and the fundamentals and it's more difficult to teach little kids, right? So K through two, we shoot for 22 and under. Three through six, we shoot for 25 and under. So those are sort of the targets, just to sort of think about as you're looking at these individual graphs. The one question that I had, and I may have just missed something when we were presenting it, but if you go to the reading specialists, there's reasonable consistency, although North even jumped about, about 20%, but there's a big jump in students accessing reading specialists between 22, 23 and 23, 24 at Bryantville. Is there, was there just more students identified with need? Was it something that opened up? Was there more, more reading specialists at Bryantville? Why, I mean, that jump's pretty large.
So the 22, 20, is that what you said? I'm sorry. So one thing that's a little different is, this wouldn't explain why the increase, but the data last year was a little later or earlier in the year. Like the time of year doesn't exactly line up. But I think it's the actual kindergarten number.
Oh, all right.
So actually, it is the time of year now that I can think. At, last year it was in March, so that kindergarten group was already screened and already pulled out. So those groups were pullout groups. Because those small groups haven't happened yet, she's in the classrooms. So she's able to access more of those students within the classroom. So that would be why the number is higher.
Yeah, that is, that is super helpful. Thank you.
So I, my question is around the social emotional curriculum. What is the name of the program for the bullying?
Sure, it's the Second Step.
Second Step? Okay. And then you, it says this cost can be grant funded, so.
Correct. So that's something I work with, the three elementary school principals work with Jessica DiLorenzo on. Jessica has a budget line in her, and it has historically had one, being able to fund social emotional, it is a priority from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's a priority of Oz and Pembroke. So Jessica is able to fund that. And I believe Jessica Moving Floyd would probably be able to help out with that. Thank you. You got it on the record.
So, so I think grant funded is always good.
Very.
But thank you very much for your presentation. It was really helpful. And there's no other questions? I think we can move on to our middle school.
All right. Earl Work. So I'm going to be going over the enrollment, that historical view you had kind of just mentioned, Patrick. And then our current class size is, I wanted to really review what kind of, some of the things you supported last year. Just highlight that because it can be really tough during a tough budget cycle to not, to recognize that, you know, I feel like this district's always growing in spite of some of the challenges we have, so. And then I wanted to end with my budget request. So you can see the graph, look at the table, it's easier. This current year, we had 369 students in total at the middle school. And right now, we're anticipating 359. So you can see there's been kind of a slope downward in overall enrollment in the seventh, eighth middle school.
Just to clarify, just to clarify one point, because I know there's some people that got some enrollment numbers last night. So the enrollment numbers that were shared last night are the October 1 enrollments that we report to the state. What Donna is sharing tonight is that 369 students are at Pembroke Community Middle School today. So there's been, I think, seven students more over the course of October to today.
Yeah.
But it doesn't count for our funding.
Right, yeah. But when I make these, I'm just looking at the real numbers versus like what got uploaded to the state December 1st, I mean, October 1st. So just to look down the breakdown of the three elementary schools, that's what it looks like across the board. Would leave, future seventh grade is at 195. Thank you, colleagues. And our current seventh grade will be moving up to eighth grade, and that's 164.
This is giving me algebra vibes and I'm getting hives, just to be clear.
Yeah, N equals.
Okay. Sorry for the busyness, which I know some people find challenging, but wanted to get all of the class sizes up there and the range of the class sizes, to give you a sense of that and the number of sections, and then the class size average. Just give people some time. The class sizes, as Patrick had mentioned, in spite of the fact that we've had some cuts over the year, I think our class size is still feeling, is still falling in a really solid range where I feel like we can continue to do really good work. All right. So then I wanted to just go over a few things from last year. So last year, I asked for six enclosed 3D printers, three per grade. We had a decent amount of 3D printers already at the, at the middle school from some previous grant work. The enclosed printers are much safer for students, but we were able to kind of use the printers we had and I think shifted some to the high school and elsewhere. So previous purchases on the 3D printers were not kind of wasted and these have been in constant use at our STEM lab classes. Again, on our STEM lab and our computer programming, we have gotten a Tinker license. And we had done a new course last year called Intro to Computer Programming. And that license, as well as a 3D printer, has helped us kind of incorporate that. This is this first year. That class is up and running in grade eight as one of the electives. An additional water station for the lower level, so this may, so we had a water station. If you've been to the middle school and you've gone to like the gym, there's a water station as you kind of walk in before you go down the stairs. In the like busyness of the middle school, that was like a very popular place during classes. So it was, there was just a lot of kids that were thirsty from downstairs and, you know, there was just a lot of kids, right? So, and they're great because kids take their water bottles and they drink, they hydrate. It's actually really important. But I wanted to get a hydration station down at the lower level. So that took a little bit of time with some of the supply demands, but we got that in probably about seven or eight weeks ago. And then the other piece was the hard surface walkway going from the front parking lot into the gym. So prior to COVID, we used to have all the seventh and eighth graders get dropped off and they would come into the cafeteria and it was pretty dense. And then at COVID, then trying to think about how we adjusted, kind of how we did things in a way that facilitated, you know, physical health. The seventh graders now enter and they go into the cafeteria and the eighth graders go down and go into the gym. It's really nice, but there was like a slope there and when it rained or snowed, it was at times quite treacherous. So the hard surface walkway is to make it safer for students to get downstairs. One of my big budget requests last year, because staffing's always a big, big item to ask for, was a Titan compass room. The elementary schools had started a Titan room the year before and the high school had started it the year before or two years before. So my job, my hope was to kind of build consistency and have that same support program kind of throughout. So to kind of tie the middle, elementary and the, and the high school together, I called it Titan compass room because theirs is the compass and theirs is Titan. And it's a support room for students. So if students are out for like mental health or extended medical care or a variety of reasons, you can come back to school and feel really, really overwhelmed. There's seven periods a day, it's boom, boom, boom. And teachers try really hard to catch kids up, but it's busy and it makes it hard for kids. And then, you know, so the goal of the compass room is for students to kind of come back in and have a like quieter, smaller room where they would get support and have time to catch up. So I was incredibly grateful to have that filled last year. So what I wanted to kind of just briefly, I'm not going to read all of these, these were just some of the goals of the compass room. As I've talked about in previous meetings, I worked really, really closely with the elementary schools. I saw all their programs and I worked really, really closely with the high school to try to think about how do I developmentally match our program to the needs of middle school students. So it's been a very, very successful model in its first year. We initially had a different flow chart, so this is a flow chart, we just wanted to really document the process. So we identify needs kind of at the front office and then we work with the counselors, administration to determine which classes they may need support in. And so sometimes when they're coming back, you may not want to pull them from math, right? Because like they may not catch up. So we give them extra support in math, maybe during elective block, and they're still able to be in their math class and still catch up. Teachers work on identifying critical assignments. And then we monitor how long students are in the compass program and then we have an exit strategy. So we are tracking all of the data on that regularly to make sure we're finding kind of the right match for that. So this is the data for the first semester. So we had 26 students that were assigned and there is the various reasons that students may be assigned to the compass room. We always work with families and we, you know, give them a call, we explain the program, we ask if it would be helpful, we explain it to children. If students don't want to like access that support, that's something we obviously would require either. We want to be really supportive of where students are and what they will find helpful for their needs. So we can, you know, we anticipated that it would start off a little slowly in the fall, which is, it did. And as it builds, and it builds a little more towards the end of the term. And then it kind of slows down again towards the beginning of the term and then it kind of builds a little bit. That's what we've seen so far in the two semester terms we've had so far. And then there's some non-compass rooms. So we also were able to do small group testing in there and different various accommodations. So it was another really incredibly helpful support tool to manage kind of all the shifting and moving that happens in the middle school. So these are just the benefits. It really helps with assignment trackers. Mr. Dan O'Neil is a paraprofessionally hired. He's been excellent. He is, he worked actually with the track and team in the past and he has a real coaching mentality. So it's really nice to see how well he worked with students. He worked really closely with teachers and with me and my assistant principal and the counselors. It's gone really, really well. So thank you for that support last year. It was, it's really been really, really helpful. So I know this is a budget presentation, but I did want to kind of talk about the other briefly, the other kind of big budget initiative. And this has been grant funded. So last year I got $4,500 and this year I got $5,500. And I went to a series of trainings with a multidisciplinary team from my building, including Mary Beth from the high school. So to like talk about the importance of having students understand their college and career options as a way to engage them with schools. So I don't know, like sometimes we think kids should know where they're supposed to be going or at 18, they want to, which college are you going to and which, are you going to college? If you're going to college, what, what, you know, what are you going to do with the rest of your life? And that's a really, really hard decision to make. And as adults, I think we recognize that oftentimes we don't get there at 18, we don't get there at 20, sometimes we don't get there at 30. So helping kids understand how a trajectory works through life and your different options and how that ties in with college and or career options is what the focus was. So last year was a planning year when we were going through a series of training and looking at data on how this increases student engagement. And then this year, we got another implementation grant. So what we're doing with the grant is we are doing monthly lesson plans in each grade by a variety of content areas so that students get a real range of what different options are available, what, you know, exploring STEM lab careers or various things in writing. We're also integrating like communication and collaboration and some of those baseline skills that we know from research, regardless, it's going to help you be successful in life. So we're also fully on that. So this is what the schedule looks like. This gets shared on my weekly regularly. And then part of what I really want to do is communicate with families also, because sometimes in middle school, parents don't hear a lot of what's going on, so we try to push it out. So I, we send out weekly, if not monthly newsletters to keep families updated and then I keep track of it. Because this is grant funded, tracking how we're using the money is really, really important because it's either state or federal dollars, so that the tracking of that money is really, really important. And that's one way I can do that. And then for your viewing pleasure, I did a link to a YouTube video of Brian Zikello, who is a NESN producer, and he was a Pembroke student. And he was able to talk about kind of how he navigated and, you know, got to where he's gotten and, and he started in like Pembroke, you know, taking filming meetings like this was one of the first things. Pembroke, you know, taking filming meetings like this was one of the first things he started as a, as a high school student, right? So you don't know where things are going to land you and I think that's part of the goal is to expand student understanding of options. And then my budget request, so although it was funded last year, I want to be, you know, I was just reiterating the importance of the compass room. So that was one full-time paraprofessional at $30,000. The other two budget requests are related to special education supports. So the, I show at the bottom, you can see the numbers. So the current grade seven students have 28, the incoming have 37. So that's a jump, right? But I didn't want to be unclear. So the rising eighth graders though are going up with 33. So there's a slight increase in the overall number of special ed students that are going to be in the middle school next year. But doing some preliminary work, we've seen that the level of support needed for many of those kids is much higher than it has been in previous years. So additional special ed supports would be an ask. Obviously this is a, you know, a wish list type of thing, so that's why I requested that.
And just to clarify that they add to 130,000.
Yes. But if there's, you know, if there's a little more, I could, yeah. You know, I'll take it. I'm not going to like, I'm not going to fight you guys on it.
I thought you could slip in a couple 600,000 if you kind of noticed.
So Donna, this is, this is new math.
It's a great one. I want to be careful with this stuff.
Is this on the MCAS? That's all I want to know. So it's not multiple positions, it's just the one?
I mean, I'm not going to fight you on it. If people feel like they want to provide support.
Well, I'm going to say no to what's there, so if you keep going.
Thank you so much, Donna. I'm going to start with Mike.
Okay, well, my first question's been answered. But thank you, Donna, for the presentation. It's always good to talk to you. I think, I think my, my first question is, is just as you mentioned, the first, the thing that really stood out to me was the increase in special ed for the incoming grade seven. It jumped, it's jumping roughly 30%. Is that something that you see being consistent going forward? And is there a reason, like are we identifying more or you think there's more kids that need it than there were or is there some?
So it goes back a little bit to what Erin said earlier, is that like some of, you know, Erin's numbers that she presented are from the, you know, October enrollment data, right? And the number I'm going to look at right now, when I'm looking at my special ed, I look at the real time, we have right now in my building, number wise, right? In January.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Plus the seventh grade enrollment for next year is 20% higher than the seventh grade enrollment this year.
Right. But there's also like sometimes an increase in special ed throughout the year. So my seventh grade number is from January.
Yeah.
The sixth grade number is, you know what I mean? So there's some variability there and changes. And then, yeah.
Okay, no, that makes sense. And I think the other question I had was about compass, which I think I mentioned to you guys, I probably could have used that when I was in school.
Honestly, it's so helpful.
I was absent quite a bit for reasons. And, you know, usually I'd be out a couple of days and have to have a recovery day and then a recovery day for my recovery day and all that.
Like I'm sure you're stressful going back to school.
Well, yeah, it goes through the roof. I noticed that there was like half the students, 13 out of the students were qualified because of extended or frequent absences. And I've read that since COVID and the kids have gone back to school, there's been, that's been an issue everywhere. Is that something that we kind of expect to kind of fade out a little bit more or is that? I'm just trying to figure, maybe this is beyond this, you know, conversation, but is that also something that you see going forward as, as a kind of a permanent thing or is that kind of a temporary COVID type?
I don't know if it's permanent, right? Because it's all very bitter, but it's incredibly important data point, right? So tracking and understanding attendance, right, shows you something. Is there, is there an underlying health issue? Are there other issues going on? Like it's something you, you know, and as, when I was in elementary school, I also pay a, pay attention, it means something, right?
Yeah.
I think in the nurses all the time, even if they're in school, like, so it's just one of the data points you look at. So I think the goal with compass is to increase student sense of physical and emotional safety in the building so that they get back into the regular classes. And when do you push them out of the nest, right? So one of the things we talk about a lot in compass is like some kids get really comfortable and, you know, I love that, but I also know, you know what I mean?
You got to get them out after a while.
Yeah, like you want, and you want to support them to do that in a way that is manageable for them and also let them feel a little bit of sometimes a distress of going back into kind of a more demanding environment. So I think that attendance is something we all pay a lot of attention to and have a lot of internal systems we use to track and we work with other agencies and pieces around and try to really understand what's going on for that student in that family and then be kind and empathic, but also try to support. So I don't know if.
Chronic absenteeism is something that the state is looking really closely at as well.
Yeah, that's been on the rise everywhere.
Prior to COVID, what you saw, so chronic absenteeism is defined as being absent 18 or more days in the school year. And we, you saw bigger numbers at the secondary level prior to COVID. Coming out of COVID, it's elementary students that are chronically absent now.
Oh, really?
And I think, I think the last data point in the webinar that we had said 34% of elementary students are chronically absent in the state, which is significantly greater than what we saw before COVID. So there's, there's a ton of work at the state level on that initiative and I think Mark, it's in Mark's goals that he shared during his school improvement plan as well. So it's something that pre-K through 12 we're looking at.
Great. And I liked in your presentation that you spent most of your time highlighting what you already received, which was very nice.
That you guys, I appreciated it greatly.
People on the school committee have egos, so they like. Thank you, Donna.
Only just one question kind of led me to another, Donna, maybe not directly. If the state is 34%, where do we see our number?
So we're, I think.
I guess.
Yeah, less than said. I think, I think we have 17% of elementary students. Obviously we don't have data from this year yet because we're just about at the halfway point, but I think last year 17% of our elementary students were chronically, considered chronically absent. And some of that is a function of sending in doctor's notes, right? So anytime your student is absent, you want to make sure that you send in a note if you've seen a physician and whatnot, so. But our, the state has for a number of years outlined what attendance looks, needs to look like at all levels. So at day five, you're getting a letter from the school and every subsequent absence that's following up, there's, you know, meetings that happen at the building levels as well. So.
Yeah, I saw Desi actually has a, yeah, the whole media campaign that just launched recently. Question to it and then again, Donna, fantastic as always. Question I have, and I hear about probably more at the middle school level, and I guess I don't know if it's parents talking, but like the bullying kid being picked on kind of component, I didn't see anything here. Were we doing anything at the middle school level?
Yep.
Kind of beyond, if I could just ask for that.
Absolutely. You know, always want to be safe to ask questions, right? So we have a bullying intervention plan that we, it's K through 12, right? Pre-K through 12. We have a 21st century skills curriculum that we kind of support students that way. One of the things I think is particularly helpful at the middle school is that the school guidance counselors are actually teachers and they know every student. So they teach them a class like once a week. And I think it breaks down the barrier between a counselor in a private office versus someone in your classroom where you're talking about social emotional issues or you're talking about goal setting and what did you do in term one or, you know, whatever the case may be, digital literacy, mental health. So I think that helps hopefully students feel more comfortable reporting to their counselor, whoever the case may be, when we hear, you know, middle school can be tough developmentally, right? Historically can be really tough. So I think that we try to be really proactive in investigating when we hear. Sometimes you hear kind of, you don't even hear directly, sometimes you hear kind of that, you know, kind of secondary and then like as soon as you do though, you start investigating, right? You're not sure, do kids feel comfortable, you know? And so you want to investigate and really look into it and make sure people have a voice and that you're responding and you want to work really closely with families on it because it can be really difficult to worry about your child.
Perfect. Thank you.
I don't think I have any questions other than I like being able to see the Titan compass room when we are walking through.
Yeah, so great. Yeah, thank you so much, you guys. It was really so helpful to have you. Patrick?
Great slides. So I could just, I think my main question, it's, it's all actually for all of you, right? And again, I'm going to try and use this as an opportunity to educate the public a little bit. We talk a lot about social emotional learning. We've had a couple of presentations on it just so far this year. I have been hearing it now for sort of years. Can you just explain in everyday language, everyday English for folks, what is it? What is social emotional learning?
Social emotional learning is understanding your emotional kind of profile, how to manage your emotions, like even tying it back to the MYCAP like initiative around college and career. Like when we look at college and career, you know, to be sure, you know, you get hired for your skills, fired for your personality, right? Like, and that's not probably disrespect, I don't mean to be disrespectful when I say that, but like how we function in the world and how we manage collaborating, communicating and, and not getting, you know, what we want and dealing with frustrations and all of that social emotional functioning really helps us manage our lives better and gives us better resiliency and coping skills. So part of what we want to do is help kids understand their emotions, right? Do you want to give vocabulary for? Because the more we understand emotions, right? Like are we raging or are we irritated, right? All in the same, it's a spectrum, right? But, you know, you want some nuance on that. And then how do you manage normal feelings, right? Being angry, we say to kids, is a normal feeling. What you did with your anger, not handbook violation, right? Like, so the feeling okay, right? You're going to, not feeling, you've got to feel anger. It's not okay not to feel anger. It's a normal, healthy emotion. How do you manage it in a way that is serving to you as well as serving to you as a member of your community, small, big community? So it's really helping kids navigate that. And I think that this has always, I feel like been done. I think parents have always done it. I don't think it's new shocking information for parents of how your children function and get along with their siblings or with family is new. So there's, you know, it just captured this like social emotional learning, but it really is just more of an awareness of how important it is and that some kids need more support on this than other kids. And the language we help give them and the tools we help them and practice with them help them be more successful in school, but more importantly in life as a member of society.
Thank you, Donna. That was really helpful.
And I would just jump off of what Donna just said, just an elementary perspective as well. We do an awful lot of work about how your behavior impacts others, so social thinking. And that's like the other side of the story here as well. So it's not always just about yourself and your own managing your own feelings, but basically when you have a big feeling and you're outwardly, you know, showing that to others, that has an impact on the, on the larger community as well. And I think that leads right into like, you know, how do we, how do we restore ourselves when we do kind of, you know, have errors in, you know, our own behavior and how do we kind of make things better for, for, you know, our classmates as well? So that's the other side of it.
That's great.
Thank you so much. I actually, they asked any questions I would have asked, this is not a lot there. I appreciate the presentation and knowing how the compass room is working.
I know, it's so great. Yeah. Sorry.
And glad you got your walkway. Next up is the high school budget.
Very good stuff. Thank you. Good evening. And much like the other principals, I've broken down the presentation on the following four categories. I'll start off talking about the enrollment and class sizes. I will get right to the chase with the FY25 budget priorities. I will certainly thank you all as well for your FY24 commitment to the high school. I don't have any slides about that, but next year, Mike, I will do that.
Yeah, that's not a good idea, Mike.
When you give me what I want in 25, we thank you next year at this time. I have a slide for each request and the rationale for that. And then I have some forecasting for FY26, if you are interested in hearing what that And so there are the historical enrollment numbers for Pembroke High School for the past 10 years. That, those graphs reflect the graphs you saw at the other principals and their, their presentations. We're hovering right now about 703 students in the high school this year. There's, those are the average class sizes by department. Those have held pretty steady. The English department has gone up. That slide last year had the English department class size at 18. We did reduce 1.0 FTE in the English department last year, last budget cycle. Everything else has held pretty steady. I would imagine that those class sizes for the world languages will come in handy for later on down on the agenda there. And that brings us then to the priorities for FY25. I think I didn't include this language here, but I could certainly mimic the elementary principals' language and I would just place those tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three, maybe in the order in which they are listed, maybe flip-flopping the bottom two, but, and just so that you know, my slide, Mike can confirm this, the numbers are on my slide correct. I'm not to show it's happening up there, I don't know, but.
They're right.
The first, the first priority for, for us at the high school is a director of counseling. And again, this is given based on the mission that Erin gave us, that what is it that you need for your building to run as smoothly as possible and for your, your students to have the best educational experience possible, right? In the 2017-18 school year, we reduced a director of guidance at the end of that school year. And what I'm asking for is to bring back a director of counseling. The name has changed for a reason, which I can explain that in a little bit. I'd also ask, as I did last year, for an increase in the extracurricular activities fund for our students for $25,000. There is an asterisk there on the slide that indicates there is a potential to fund that request with a fee restructuring, but absent that, I would ask that to be given tier two status priority for the high school. And then also a request last year as well was a, an educational technology integration specialist. We do have Mike Tinker here in the district who's an amazing addition. I'm requesting to be an additional specialist for the secondary grades to do the things that Mike does so well already here. And so then here's the rationale then for each of those requests. First and foremost, it's the director of counseling. I do feel as though this aligns perfectly with the district's goal of academic achievement. That's the goal that this committee has set for the district. And a lot has changed, I think, since the elimination of the guidance director position in 17-18. Since then, we've also reduced the number of guidance councils as well. So we have lost in the past five years or so a director of guidance and a counselor. And that's enrollment driven, certainly the council reduction was, was certainly enrollment driven.
For sure.
Okay? But the caseloads for those councils have remained the same. In fact, it's a little bit higher. All right? So back in 17-18, we were at 900 students. We had four counselors, case load about 225. We're at 700 with three, we're at a little bit above, we're about 233 or so, all right? So it's, it's a bit more, but when I say increase in, in the caseloads, I'm not talking about the numbers necessarily. I'm talking about the acute level of need. I think the increase in pressures for academic achievement have grown exponentially in, in that short period of time. And I think that that, that, that pressure for achievement is impacting both our students and our counselors. There's a lot to manage there, okay? The 233 students on their caseloads, their needs are different now, all right? There is that social emotional component that so many of them carry with them that, that, you know, that was not necessarily the case, at least at this level, pre, post pandemic or pre-pandemic rather. So I think that what our counselors see day in and day out is just, it's a different student. Not only that, we have, we've provided more supports for them. And so the, the counseling field at all of our schools, the number of people that kind of fall under that umbrella is larger, right? So our adjustment counselors, I would qualify or put them in, in that umbrella. Our compass personnel, full-time teacher, interprofessional, I think should go under that umbrella. Our ARC coordinator, full-time teacher should go under that umbrella. There are so many things now, there's so many people in our building that need support, that need supervision, that need that go-to person to help them on a day-to-day basis. I think about the number of educational plans that are in our building, whether they be 504, IEP, students that are accessing our D cap. That number has, is growing and the, and the needs on those plans, right, are much more intense. There is an increase in the number of students who are qualifying for special education strictly for counseling, not necessarily specialized education, but specialized services, all right, i.e. counseling. And I have another slide with those numbers there, okay? But I also think that our counselors, as I think this group knows, they are, are also teaching lessons. They meet in small groups during Titan time. This week. This week they have, I believe, the sophomores in their Titan time right now with some educational programming. That's a fluid, that's an evolving curriculum. And having someone who can help direct them to the right places and the right resources and the right curriculum matters to deliver to our students, I think is really important. Right now, that work is being done by a variety of people, all right? Kristen Kelly, who was an assistant principal of the high school, is the primary evaluator for the guidance department. I'm the secondary evaluator. Megan Collins certainly shoulders a lot of that load as well. So it's, we've got a lot of people chipping in to help that. But what I'm saying is there is really a need for it to be one person, to be streamlined, someone who's, whose bread and butter is counseling to help, to help our three counselors and our two adjustment counselors do their job. I mentioned the, the numbers of students who are receiving supports. And so the breakdown here of students who are on IEPs under the spread umbrella versus students who are on 504 plans versus students who are English language learners or former English language learners and any services that happen there. I'd ask you to pay, to focus strictly on the ninth grade numbers for a moment, even the sophomores as well. But the number of students that are on an IEP, for instance, or who are under the umbrella, and by that I mean they're in the pipeline for testing. They might not be on an IP right now, eligible right now, but they're in the pipeline for testing, so therefore they're protected and they are, we afford them the services that come with that. So that number 36, that's a jump from last year, okay? That number last year, when they were sophomores, that was 20. Sorry, I got it written down in somewhere, sorry. Sorry. I got it written down here, sorry. I think it was 28. And as I saw on, on Donna's presentation, the seven, eight grade students, thank you, Donna, it is 28, yeah. I saw on Donna's presentations, the number of students are in the 30s in the rising eighth grade and rising seventh grade class. And so I would suspect then that as our 12 graders graduate and those 20 students that are on IEPs, right, we'll replace them with a class that has more than that. And so I think that that just pinpoints the need to have a director of counseling there. The 504 plans in the ninth grade class, that has gone up, that was 16 at this time last year. It's now 19. So again, as we start to move through the continuum here, we're getting more students with acute level of need.
Mark, do you just put your slides back up? I think you leaned on the keyboard.
Oh, my goodness. Sorry about that.
Is it in your Chrome MMB?
Leave it to Mary Beth.
Oh, don't get too excited.
I was about to come.
It looks promising.
I was about to say, can we get someone from STEM Lab in here?
Computers are now like the equivalent to what VCRs were when I was in school, the teachers.
It's fine, just keep going.
Sorry. I got so excited up here, I was banging on buttons and everything. The rationale for the, the second request, the increase in extracurricular activity funding, that also aligns with the district goal for academic achievement and social emotional wellness. We currently have 53% of our student body that is involved in at least one extracurricular activity. We have 32 activities that do offer a paid stipend for the advisor, but we have seven that do not. And that number could increase. There's a student that approached me last week about starting a club. And we enjoy that and we support students who have an interest and want to have a club. But at this point in the year, if they approach us about starting a club, they have to find advisors who want to do it and volunteer for doing it. So by having those different additional monies, it will give us some flexibility there. We talked last year about the increase in transportation costs. And so every time the math team has to go somewhere or every time the Mark trial is going to Hingham District Court, the fees for the buses, they're more than they used to be. And so that, that $25,000 increase would be used to offset some of that stuff as well. And then finally, the rationale for the education tech specialist. It aligns with the district goal of achievement and technology. As you know, everyone now has a device in his or her hand, students, teachers, professionals, you name it. And so supporting our teachers, supporting our students to use those devices so that they, they have the experience of what it's like to learn in the 21st century so that they can compete, you know, with their global peers so that they are progressing along the Cima model, right? That's the technology version of Bloom's taxonomy. We've made some great progress there, but I'm asking for the integration specialist to help our staff, to embolden our staff, to be confident in developing lessons that require our students to interact with that technology for more than just substitution, for more than just opening up a Google Doc and writing an essay versus writing it paper and pencil. We want our students to, to be into modifying, redesigning some assignments and some assessments. And I think that we need some support, our staff needs some support with that. I also want to build on some momentum from our pathways. We currently have the computer science pathway. And as we'll be discussing later on tonight, there's a proposal to add another pathway. So I think that that person would certainly play a role in supporting the students and the staff who are part of the pathway programs as well. Finally, as I look at 26, FY26, I'm just kind of forecasting some things. Most of those forecastings revolve around facility repairs. The high school now is, since the rehabilitation is 20 years old. And so the plumbing is all 20 years old, all those toilets are exactly the same age. They're 20 years old and they're all starting to fail at the exact same time. So are the sinks in the bathrooms, they're all exactly the same age. And so I'm seeing a lot of redundant trips to the, by the plumber into our school to repair this faucet, repair that toilet. So it's just things to consider, the flooring, for instance, in the cafeteria, in our atrium. As you walk on it, you see those tiles, I think that the left inspected seat perhaps is met. The parking lots, the external walkways and stairwells, the brick wall, you know, outside of our main landing there. There's some work that needs to be done there, I think, some cosmetic work for sure, but it's going to require some, some monies. I mentioned additional FTE for math and science. That's just, that to me is just a guess. Mary Beth and I have talked about this, it may not come to fruition. But as we build these pathway programs, for instance, this year, Tara Cattie is teaching four sections of biomedical science, right? Four sections of that. We're offering the second component of that class next year, if all goes well tonight. So while I don't suspect we're going to need four sections of biomedical, the intro class next year, what if we need two? And those kids that are in already the first one, all take the next one. That's now six sections, that's 1.2 FTE. And right now, we only have 1.0, right, kind of dedicated to that. So the same thing with Charlie and Morse Engineering. Three, we're running three full sections there. We're running the, the second level of that course next year, hopefully. And so, you know, I don't know what's going to happen, right? And, but I'm just putting that out there, that if our pathways are as successful as you want them to be, there could be a need down the line to add FTEs in those areas.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mark, for the presentation. And, you know, we're, we're both from Braintree, so, you know, I'll just go with whatever. No, I'm just kidding. I like that you put in the, that you forecasted some, some of your concerns for next year too, for us to, to keep an eye on. I mean, I, I think facility repairs are a huge thing and I think we could, if you jump on something and get it done right, you could save money in the long term. So I like that you're looking at that. I thought 53% of the student body that participates at least on one extracurricular activity sounds like a lot, like that sounds pretty good. How does that, do we know how that compares with other districts or?
I don't, I would suspect it's, it's right around there, I would, you know.
It sounds like a lot, which sounds pretty good to me.
It is a lot, I'm very happy with the number, sure, yeah, yep.
And then the question I have here, let me see here. So you're looking for the director of counseling. Would he be, basically it sounds like he'd be kind of a managerial position, directing the other counselors out there? And would he actually be counseling, or he or she would actually be counseling as well? Or is that a possibility?
I would say the model could be dictated by need. Sure, I get what you're saying, right? So if there's a need for, for the director to absorb a modified caseload, and that certainly has happened, there are schools that do that for sure. Ours did not do that because there wasn't the need for it. But certainly whomever, if that position were to be afforded to us and whomever we hire for that, we would always prepare them for that possibility for sure, yeah.
Yeah. And then I guess the other question I have too is, you know, 12th grade, there's 20 students under the spread umbrella, they drop off, as you mentioned. And then there's 36 ninth graders, I think there was 30 something incoming ninth graders for next year. So obviously, there's going to be more kids under that umbrella. Is it typical that those numbers shrink as they go through high school? Or is that just a matter of, you know, a one-off type of?
No, I think the goal, right? The goal is to, is to scale back the supports for students because they don't need them, right? Because they've been getting support really maybe as early as in the, in the primary grades. As they get through high school, we are always trying to teach them, you know, self-sufficiency and give them strategies, you know, to overcome learning challenges. And so it's not uncommon to see the number of kids on a plan, right, shrink as they get in the higher grades.
Okay.
That's the goal for sure.
Yeah. And then I think that might be, I mean, some of the questions I have too regard state aid and the number of students that have dropped. Is that worthwhile for this discussion or would that be something more? Okay.
Mark can't answer those questions.
Not yet.
Mark doesn't want to answer those questions. Heaven knows. You're Mark, again, outstanding as always, an equal fantastic job. I don't have any real questions at this time, so.
I stole all those questions. I looked over at your page and I was like, ooh, that's a good one.
For the activities advisors, how is that chosen? Who is paid and who has to be a volunteer?
It's a great question. So generally speaking, it's the, the clubs that have demonstrated sustainability over the course of several years, once they do that and they're funded, they remain funded. It's not like next year it's, okay, now it's your turn to free, right? So really, the clubs that are here are the relatively new clubs, the clubs that have been volunteered for many, many years. Maybe the exception that's Mark trial, one year didn't run, a couple of years ago just didn't run. And so we, we then took that stipend position and offered it something else. And now that Mark trial's back in, just can't take away from somebody, right? So that's pretty much how that works.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So the director of counseling, we've tried this four different times, I think, since 2008. Like, we had it, we didn't have it, they carried a caseload, they didn't carry a caseload, they managed teams and whatever. I heard you say that the need is changing, which I can understand and see, but how much? Let me ask you this question, how much is it? Because when I did the, the math wasn't working.
So it's 120, it'd be 120.
So I guess my question is, do we need a director of counseling? Or do you need another counselor? Is probably my first question.
In my opinion, you need a director of counseling. We don't need another counselor necessarily. I'd take one if that was part of the.
No, well, I would never offer both right now.
But to keep in mind, the director of counseling is a position greater than just Pembroke High School. So it would, if we were to create that, it would encompass pre-K through 12.
So they would handle anything happening in the middle school.
Right, we have two guidance, we have social workers across the board, all of that.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
But I, that is a differentiation between, because we didn't even have a social worker in 2008. So it tells you how far, some kind of the need. I think piece by piece, it goes, candidate, it's going to be a tough budget cycle, right? So adding a, a position at that level, I don't know if it's doable or not.
Understood, yep.
But I think understanding, when, when we roll everything up and we're getting the administration's recommended level one, level two, level three priorities, this is on it. One of, I do want to be able to understand why is it different, right? Because it, it, we've, we've tried this in so many iterations. I just, I don't want to make a $120,000 investment to try something that we've tried before.
Yeah, so I think that the, the thought process is aligning it to our content supervisor model that runs pre-K through 12 and looking at counseling. As you heard through some of the questions that you asked and what some of the principals have presented, there's a curriculum associated with counseling with social emotional learning. All of that didn't exist in 2008.
Agreed, no, I think it's fair.
You know, the sheer number of staff, I think there's 16 people that would fall under that umbrella, which is very similar to some of the caseloads of our content supervisors when it comes to supervision and evaluation. And just really to have some consistency, I think, you know, the five building principals in front of you work, work really well together. But what you heard Donna say was last year, when we created the Titan Compass Room at the middle school, it's because we had one at the elementary school and we had one at the high school, but there was nothing at the middle school. And that's a gap that we, you know, if there was a director of counseling, probably wouldn't have had. There would have been somebody for, for thinking.
I'm open to hear, but I'm just a little skeptical.
We didn't say it was a priority.
And again, 2017, 2018 wasn't that long ago. It's the last time we eliminated, it was for budgetary reasons.
It was, right, yeah.
And no, I, no, I remember, I mean, I remember.
No, I know, but I guess I'm just saying, like you said, we tried that. To me, it was working wonderfully and then because of the budget, it was reduced, right? So it is a need and I think that if you think about it in this perspective, right, this, the, the number of students who are protected by federal and state law under these education plans and the number of meetings that we hold each year, these are crucial, crucial meetings. And while our staff does a great job of running them, and I'm speaking, I'm sure for Donna as well, when I say that, in my opinion, we need someone who's, who's responsibility, sole responsibility is oversight of that to make sure that we are in compliance and that we're not making mistakes that could put this district in jeopardy. And to help our kids more importantly, right, to make sure they're getting what they need. It's just, it's, it's a challenge right now with the model we're using right now, right? Not one we're not up to, we're up to it, but to me, it is a priority, right, to have something like this here.
No, 100%, and you're doing what we asked you to do, right? Like, what do you need in, in your putting it on the list? I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my, this one in particular, because I've seen it so many different ways. That's why I'm asking the question.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
On the, the $25,000 of the extracurricular work, is that going to kids or is that going to stipends?
In what way would it go to kids?
So it, it goes to paid advisor positions so that the kids can have clubs. But also, as Mark referenced, the transportation fees and some of the association fees associated with the clubs has gone up in the years. That budget line has not really moved.
Okay, so what we're saying is, over the years, the use of, even if it's our own bus, there's still a fee to do that. So we, we've used additional sort of outside needs and resources. That line item has an increasing, so to me, that's.
And we've done some new things, right? So you've had a couple of presentations where they shared successes of our unified sports teams. That was grant-funded the first couple of years. It isn't anymore, we're encompassing that and that, that budget line as well.
Okay. And then my last question, I also thank you for looking at fiscal year 26. I think it was, I, I think anytime we can be forecasting out or even a little further, I think it's really helpful. The good news, if there is good news, is that the facility repairs and what have you, most of these are one-time funds or, or one-time costs, right? So if we have the opportunity to get one-time money or have usage, it may be a good, kind of a good place for it to go. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So I think I'm, I'm going to go back to the director of counseling and I'm just trying to understand, because we have, you know, over the last, since I've been here, hired several support staff. You know, we, we have what you said, two adjustment counselors.
Yeah, there's six social workers in the district. There's a compass teacher and parent professional at the high school. There's a Titan lab para at the middle school, all three of the elementary schools as well. There's the ARC program at the high school.
Yes. So, so my concern is that, you know, I, I kind of feel like we did a little backwards. We should have like had a direct, hired the director first to see what the needs were and where we could fit them, you know?
Yeah, we very rarely ask for ads in the admin section of the budget, right? So generally, that's where we cut or we reorg in, in hopes of preserving classroom or programming at any one of the schools, so.
Right, right. Well, I'm just concerned there's a lot of.
You know, it's, it's a mentality, if you build it, they will come, right? So we've put these amazing supports in, in all of the buildings across the past eight or nine years. And now we're to the point where we need somebody to manage that in addition to the staff that we, the administrative staff.
And I totally understand that. I just, we're just so counseling heavy now that I feel like, especially on a year where we have.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would challenge your, your statement of counselor heavy. The caseloads across the district are, are pretty high. across the district are pretty high.
Yep.
A lot of our social workers and school psychologists at the elementary, middle school and high school level are plan-driven, as Mark just identified, so it's not necessarily heavy, but we have made additions in those areas over the past few years.
We've made additions, and I do understand there's a lot of behavior issues that have to be handled, believe me, I do understand that, but it's, you know, it is a concern. I, you know, am reluctant to look at this at this time.
Just a reminder, it is a wish list, when we sit down administratively, we put them 1, 2, 3, Mark, what I hear them saying is, this is not a one for them.
But Mark's also doing exactly what we need, Mark.
Yeah, absolutely, we need to know where the gaps are, and like Patrick said, like, knowing what facility repairs are we going to, we're going to need is so important, because, you know, I've been saying that for a while, that we need to really start looking at the facilities and how are we going to upgrade them. It's been 20 years, if we want to maintain these high schools and not have to rebuild them someday, we have to put some money into them, we have to, like, look at that.
Yep, it's 25 years for our elementary schools and 20 years for the high school.
Yeah, so.
There is one budget question that came into the mailbox.
Okay, go ahead.
And the question is about how South Shore VOTEC or the buying, potential buy-in to South Shore VoC fits into the budget discussions. Are there any expenses related to that possibility that would occur in FY '25? So the Planning Committee for that is meeting, actually, next Tuesday?
Next week, next Wednesday?
To talk about it, so Tom Hickey from South Shore Tech is coming over to share with us, kind of where they are in their process, they've had some public meetings and hearings, both in Marshfields, Abington, and one other place, talking about the various options, whether it's a renovation, remodel, or new building, they do have some preliminary cost estimates for each of those scenarios. There would be no cost for us in fiscal year '25, so fiscal year '25 runs from June, July 1st through June 30th. Our membership, our future potential membership into South Shore Tech would be the following year, would fall into FY '26.
Okay.
And I think the other towns would be voting in '25, right? Is that what?
Yeah, so the plan right now is for the member towns to vote on the project in January of 2025, so.
So it's going to be a while before we really have some solid information to share with people.
Right, but there'd be no cost in fiscal year '25 for that.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay, well, thank you so much, to all of you, really appreciate it.
You can all leave but Mark, sorry.
Sorry.
You can also stay if you want.
All support?
So, you know.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, guys, here you go.
So, when they run the math, I remember that's happened.
We'll take a brief, two-minute recess.
Patrick has to go to the bathroom.
Ed's sub update, so this is part two of the conversation we started at your meeting in December around the program of studies. I'm gonna hand it over to Mary Beth in a second to take, but it is broken up into a couple of different votes for you all. So the first one is the new course proposals that we talked about. So I think there were four altogether. And Mary Beth, do you want to refresh?
Yep, on that sheet, that cover sheet is probably the best place to look right now. On the second, on the closer key.
Your mic.
On the, um, on the second, on the flip side, the new courses that we're proposing for next year, Principles of Engineering, Human Body Systems, AP World History, and AP Spanish Literature and Culture. Those are the four that, um, that have been put forth as something that we think would help our students moving forward.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
So they're clearly enrollment driven, right?
Correct.
This is, I think all of our courses being kind of student-led and student-driven with interest is important, but Mark actually raised an interesting point when he was giving his budget presentation. Will any of these require additional FTEs to both start the course next year, but also sustain the course if there's interest?
Right now, we don't believe so, but as Mark pointed out, we don't know what's going to happen with those four courses in biomedical science.
Yeah.
There's a possibility that that would be the one stressor, that that area might require, and I'm not sure if it would actually be an additional, or if we would move some other elective offering off the table that wasn't as highly enrolled. So what tends to happen is if kids vote with their feet and they move into this elective, then another elective.
They're going from somewhere else, right?
Correct, yeah, they're leaving someplace else.
But the biomedical piece would be a pretty specialized, I would think, course. So do we have the right certifications and sort of that if to be able to slot somebody else in?
So we have one teacher right now that has completed the first course in, it's called Principles of Biomedical, and then she will, she'll be doing the Human Body Systems as well. If it came to a situation where we had to add somebody quickly, we would still be able to offer training. There was an online component for the person to get training. It's not as, it is, it's fine. It's the way a lot of people go through the project lead, the way curriculum, because it is so extensive, so.
Yeah, thank you.
So, uh, you want, do you have more to?
So that's the first item.
Yes, that's one vote by itself.
I think that's one vote there.
Okay, let me just make sure. Do you have any questions, Mike?
Uh, no, we've already, I'm on the Ed Sub Committee, so we've already talked about this twice.
Great, David?
Just to quote, Mary Beth, you were actually the teacher of this course?
Yes, she is.
Yeah.
No, I am not.
Oh, I said, I saw teacher's name, and I said.
Sorry, teacher's name?
Oh, yeah.
Principles of Engineering.
I did the engineering one because in the absence of a math content supervisor, I took that on this year, yes.
Oh, okay, I, I said, I would, I would, I would follow you teaching a current course.
Yeah, well, you know, engineering, I'm gonna pick that up in my spare time.
You jump right in on engineering.
I just put these crap stuff.
As witness by what you saw.
Although, it's a really good example of how we wear multiple hats to keep down on administrative costs, so.
Yeah, no, I did, I did the write-up for the, um, for the Principles of Engineering course.
Okay, no, that, again, I just was pretty impressed with it.
Oh goodness, let's not put me in that role.
Thank you very much.
Allison, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, all right, so, uh, do we have a motion for consideration for a second read and approval for the PHS new course proposals?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous.
Okay, the second thing that we were asking in the program of studies had to do with pathways revisions. It's your packet that looks like this.
Yep.
Okay, and the, in the red is sort of the, I would call them edits, proofreading edits, appropriate labeling edits for the, um, the four pathways that we're currently running. And then we are proposing three additional pathways for next year. A music pathway, a global citizenship and learning pathway, and an information technology pathway.
All right, great, so, um, any questions? We'll start down this end. David? I think Mike is already on the committee.
No, I, I just, I had a question on the music one, but it makes a little more sense to me now, thank you.
Okay. And anybody down here?
So I think it's offering students more opportunity at the end of the day, right?
So again, yep, the, um, the music pathway, the, these courses exist already.
Right.
Students are accessing them already.
Yeah.
Students want to have a culminating project and internship experience like they see their peers doing in some of the other pathways, so that's what we're coming from.
All right.
We would see them doing an internship, though, just curious, where they?
Pardon?
Where do you think you could place them in an internship?
Aerosmith.
So, there's a few, I mean, there's a few different ways of going at that. There's translation opportunities, the, we're trying very hard to get some kind of language program going in the younger grades. There's ways for us to take some of that, global learning, some of that, and create some opportunity for, for students there. Mary Ellen Gates is doing an amazing job of reaching out to different businesses. We had a speaker come in last week from the biomedical series talking about, or?
Is your life name Richard?
Right, about nursing. It's, it's amazing what she's doing. I have full faith that we'll be able to find some, um, some places that we want to take our kids.
I'm good with it, thank you.
All right, so is there a motion for consideration for second read and approval for PHS Program of Studies pathway revisions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
And then the last, um, series of requests is on the very front of the page, and we will start with the first one. With the approval, should it become an enrolled class of the AP World History course? That would shift, um, the requirement for history, so that students must pass, no change in the number of years, they still have to pass three years of history, including one year of US History II, or Advanced Placement US History. This just acknowledges that the World History would count towards that three years.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to do these one at a time?
Yeah, do you want to do them one at a time, only because I think some of them may not?
Cause some are gonna not, yeah.
Sure, you can do that.
Okay.
So you want a motion to accept?
The change.
The change for the social studies requirement to allow AP World History to count towards the history requirement?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion, sorry.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
The second, um, request that we made was to add an estimated college grade point average to power school and guidance programs based on core academic classes as an internal data point only. This is helpful for students and families in the college search process, as we discussed on our previous meeting, in regards to teasing out electives that colleges do not count towards a GPA.
When you said this is internal only, you just meant that it's not shared with the colleges?
Correct.
It's shared with parents and students?
It doesn't go on a transcript.
Right.
It just gives families a, a stronger data point when they're looking at the range of GPAs that make them eligible, or that guide them in an application process towards college.
Yeah. I think this is a great idea. I'm not really sure what you all think. I, I think it's, it's a fantastic way for kids to, uh, have a better idea of what schools they can get into, cause at, at the, when we first brought this up at the Ed Sub Meeting, I share that I have nieces that went to, that, that were like straight A students, captains of, you know, the sports teams, and didn't get into a lot of colleges that they thought they would. So I think this is a way to, to give a better, um, in, a better barometer of what school, what schools kids can get into.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
How often is GPA calculated? Would this be the same?
Yeah, be at the same time. It's at end of course, yeah.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the, um, PHS, uh, Program of Studies Estimated College GPA Requirement Revision?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Um, our third request was to add the Massachusetts College Acceptance Information, which is in red on the back of your sheet. It's all listed there, under what the Massachusetts Board of Higher Education, what the minimum requirements are. We just want to add that to the program of studies so that it's in a logical place for families to access when they're going through the process.
Still any discussion?
No.
All right, so is there a motion to, um, approve the PHS Program of Studies to add Mass College Acceptance Information?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna move down to street law next. We want to change the, um, the recommended, um, grades for the, for enrollment in the course from nine to 12 to 10 to 12.
All right, any discussion?
I have just one question on that. That was, I, I remember us talking about this a couple of weeks ago, that there's an enrollment component, not in a practicality component, is that right? Like the ninth grade kids, not a lot of them are getting in anyway.
Correct.
Yeah, it was a pretty full class in eleventh and twelfth.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the PHS Program of Studies 2425 revisions for street law?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Next, I'd like to take a look at the recommendation to eliminate directed study for grade nine students.
Any discussion? Mike?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what that was again.
This is eliminating study for ninth grade.
Um, I don't think I have any questions on that, no.
David?
I just want to clarify, so they would not have an assigned study period, it would be a classroom period, right? Do I understand it?
Correct.
Right, so they wouldn't be able to select a study while they are doing their course registration. We completely understand that some students in ninth grade may still need a study, and that would be a conversation between, um, the administration at the middle school, parents, students, families, the high school.
So the door is open if, if a student thinks they need that study period?
Right, they just can't go and select it during course registration, they have to pick an elective.
Right.
And I would just further add to that, by the way, if there are students who we have identified as, you could use a study hall, that student would either come out of elective if they're already scheduled into one, or, or, they would, I don't think that they go to study necessarily, they go to ARC, they'll go to Compass, right? In lieu of study halls, so it's even a higher level of support, you know?
Okay.
Where the, you know, most of our study halls, kids are by themselves, doing the work on their own, but, but Compass and ARC, there's a staff teacher right there, sitting down next to them, keeping them on task, things of that nature, so.
Well, thank you.
So, like I said at the last meeting, I feel very strongly to not move forward with this proposed change. Um, you know, I can go over why I disagree. We've also, I think, got a couple of emails about it. I know, I've heard from a lot of families. I am very much opposed to taking away direct to study, cause I think that it's up to families and not, um, I, I, yeah, I, I will vote no.
Patrick?
Any questions?
Um, you know, I, I was really on the fence the last time about this, and, um, I've also talked to some students and families, and talked to people in other districts to see how they do it, and, um, you know, we do have tighten time, so, um, I think that's really helpful for students, and like if there's a student that is struggling, like Mark said, there's, at, there's avenues for them to get the help they need, the extra help, and not necessarily.
Can I just chime in? So the, the issue that I take with the tighten time being a method for this type of what kids can get out of direct to study is, it's teacher-driven, they get pulled by teachers into tighten time, and sometimes get pulled into, um, tighten time for clubs, I believe, I don't know, but, so that it's not free time always, and sometimes it's the teachers pulling them in for help, for whatnot, so that students don't have the ability to say like, wait, I need to work on my homework today, or I need to, you know, do flashcards for next period, or whatever it might be, that they don't have the same, um, freedom as they would in an independent study. At least that was kind of when I have been talking to people about this. That was, um, one of the discussions about how tighten time isn't as useful for some kids in the idea of having a study.
Yeah. And so, I, and I completely understand what you're saying, at the same time, I had talked to some students that, in other districts, and that don't have the study in ninth and 10th grade, and they didn't miss it at all. And I thought I was gonna hear, like, oh, I wish I had it, and that's not at all what I heard. So, um, that's why I changed my mind on it. But, uh, anyways, let's take a vote.
Can I, I do have a question now, and it's actually something you just said that's worth a question. So if maybe there's a kid who isn't identified, is someone that might be able to benefit from the study or what have you, if a parent were to request it, would that be something we would still consider?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. So is there a motion for a second read and approval for the PHS Program of Studies revisions for, to change directed study for, to eliminate directed study for grade nine students?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Okay, and, so it's four ayes and one no. From Allison.
And the last recommendation that was made was to begin to phase out Latin III and Latin IV. Latin I and Latin II would still continue to run. And there was actually, there was a comment made tonight that just made me think of it we have in the past, and will continue to do so for students. Some students choose to go forward with that work electronically, we've always, we've supported that in the past, and we would continue to support that in the future.
So, go down here, do we have any comment?
I guess I, I just have a question about what you, what you mean by that. If they choose to pursue that electronically, does that mean basically that they could get credit by doing it?
Correct, yeah, they could do it as an independent study.
Yep.
For what level?
Well, whatever level they want to do it at. It, it becomes obviously more of a student learning ability and a student learning fit when you're going all online for any, any kind of instruction. But we have a lot of students that benefited from COVID and are very good online learners, and they, we can provide those options to students.
As far as the budget impact, I'm sorry, I'm out of turn here. Would that be an added cost, to take it online, or no?
Um, it's a, it's a minimal cost.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something that we, um, we, we do this for a lot of different classes, you know, we do it for math classes when students need additional math. We've done it in, we've done it for other classes as well.
So when we say budget impact, would be, yes, would be a reduction of a staff member, or like a point two, or something like that?
Um, not for what, it would take some time to phase out the Latin III and the Latin IV, but eventually there would be a reduction in, unless we find something else that, as a committee, we support in terms of adding another language. ASL has been mentioned a couple of times, so there would be a budget implication eventually.
Okay.
Okay, Allison?
I completely disagree with doing this. I will also vote no. I think I've gone over the numbers before. The numbers, if, if claiming this as a, um, student enrollment, then it should be French, which I don't want to take away French, but it doesn't make any sense to say it's enrollment, and then say it should be Latin. I say, it's, if it truly is enrollment, then it will phase itself out. But to take away the option, I really disagree. I think it's, was taken away at the middle school, um, you know, so we're seeing kind of the effects of that on the higher levels, but I think there's so much that the kids gain with Latin, um, you know, we have, I think, you know, taking away, even though it's, you know, it's not a requirement for four years, or I don't think anywhere, but the numbers are just not there to me, and I think it's not the right decision to take away for enrollment reasons. If it was, you know, I understand budget-wise, that could be a different story, but for enrollment, no.
Right, and just to clarify your point that if it were enrollment-driven, it would phase itself out over time, that is just not accurate in the sense that as a committee, when you've made a commitment to a world language, we've made a commitment through the AP level. So even if four kids end up in Latin IV or Latin V, we would still offer the course, so it wouldn't phase itself out over time, unlike, uh, ceramics. If only four kids enrolled in ceramics, we wouldn't run the course. But for a language, when students enter a language pathway, we commit to it through the, the.
But it's, isn't it true that they might take it online in that case? Cause like the higher levels of those classes, like, yes, it's offered, but it's offered only online. Like you guys aren't teaching AP Latin this year.
This year is the first time we haven't taught AP Latin.
Yeah, and so because of, but because of that, it was offered online.
Correct.
Rather than not offering it.
Correct, but managing four students in an online platform in four different periods, it's, it's a different animal. So it just, the commitment from the committee is the full breadth of the pathway, so it would never phase itself out.
Yeah, I just don't see the numbers.
Patrick?
Um, so first, I, I think we have to commit to a pathway, right? If we're going to offer a language, you have to offer beginning to end, and if there are students that want to go to mastery all the way through the AP, I think that's important. So, look, it's no secret that my last year on this committee before this year, back in 2019 and in 2018, I was very vocal about not taking Latin out of the middle school. And when I, and I said, when we do this, the program will die at the high school, because the middle school is a feeder to the high school program. It's just, it's logical, it makes sense. There's not many kids that in ninth grade wake up and like, huh, let's do that, right? And, you know, you end up with kids like, I made my kids start in Latin and then go to another language if they wanted to. Yes, I'm evil, I, I get it, and I'm awful, I hear about it all the time. So I, I agree with Allison. I, I think, I think not offering the full pathway and restricting the pathway is basically what we're saying is we eventually will eliminate Latin. That to me is what ultimately will happen, because you don't have a higher pathway anymore. So why am I just gonna take Latin II and III, or I and II, or what have you? I also, when I looked at the numbers, agree. I, I think, you know, we're either offering the language, or offering the pathway, or we're not. Now, in fairness, I will also say, sending in budget sub, this was in the back of my mind, we may get to a point that for budget reasons, we've got some tough calls to make, and this may end up being one of them. If that's the case, then, then, then that's the case, and I can look at, at folks in the community and say, it was a budget priority decision. But I think for enrollment reasons, I, I, I can't support that either, so, yeah, I'm, I'm against this.
I have been on the fence about this since the last meeting, to be honest, because for all the reasons you said, I, my kids started learning about Latin in sixth grade at home.
Yeah.
And I thought, I, I feel strongly that it's really the foundation of, um, all languages, and it's like, it's such an important language in, in important history to learn, right? So, um, I, I, you know, didn't know how I was gonna vote until really right now, and I feel strongly that we should continue to offer it at, at every level if we can. I, I just think that we're doing ourselves a disservice. And again, like, if there's an enrollment issue, and like if we have to cut, like, I think we look at it then, but I don't want to do it now, I want to try to keep it if we can possibly keep it. But does it, do you have any final thoughts before we take a vote?
I mean, to me, I, I think that, um, I understand that Latin has root, roots in a lot of languages, you know, I think that, uh, there is a place for it, but I feel that there is a, a reason that the administration feels a, feels a, a need to eliminate it. I think that, I mean, this is kind of a tough thing. I think that, um, if it was a, would something else be cut as opposed to Latin if we kept it? Or is this?
I mean, I think you guys are gonna need to make a whole host of decisions when it comes to the budget.
Yeah, and that's.
You know, but I, I think this conversation is important in the sense that what's the line then when we get to the budget? Because we're talking about two entirely different timelines. So for Latin III and Latin IV to appear in the program of studies, and for students to be able to select them in February, for then, for us to then reduce them as a budgetary conversation in April, I think is difficult. I also think about efficiency of our schedule. There is, um, four students in Latin III and four students in Latin IV. Those are not taught together, they're taught as two separate courses. So that's point four of a teacher at Pembroke High School is teaching eight children. Is, is that the most efficient use of resources? I, I don't believe so, which is part of the reason why we're saying it's a student enrollment, concern, but I hear what you're saying as well.
But I do think it's important, though, we've had to make budgetary decisions after the program of studies go out, and then had to revise and, and, and redo schedules and everything else. So I, I don't know that that's a reason to vote one way or the other here. I think when it comes time, I agree with you, we will have some difficult decisions. But I also think when you see the cuts, and just, I wish I hadn't lived through it, but I've lived through it a lot, when you see the cuts up on that screen, and you're literally making priority decisions, is it this program or this program? How many kids are benefiting? What happens to the classroom? What happens to kids, you know, three grade levels down, if we cut this now, what happens to achievement in the middle school? Like, we're, those are the conversations that we have, but it gives us the ability to have them all. And if, at that point, the decision is, we're going to make a reduction here, so be it, right? But I also think there's a lot of unknowns right now in where we are from a budgetary perspective. There's a lot of unknowns right now from a revenue perspective. You know, will we get there? I would say, as, if I was a betting guy, yeah, we probably will get to some of these difficult choices, but I'd rather keep it, no different than keeping anything else, and, and make that decision in budget time.
And one other thing I just want to say is how I feel, first, language for kids who have, who learn differently, Latin is, can be really important for them to be able to take a language, because since it's not spoken, it gives them the ability to be able to still, you know, if they're going to college, you know, apply to college using Latin as a base.
Right, and keeping Latin I and II also allows them to still do that.
So, no, I understand, but again, having that, if, you know, if you're only gonna do the minimum, you know, that parts, and the other part is, okay, so current seniors would have been eighth graders when co, twenty, or were they gone into, they would have gone into the cohort as freshmen, right? So I don't know if, looking at some of these numbers, those, looking at like the seniors and juniors, like, that some of these people, some of these kids would have been entering during the cohort, so I don't know if that changed how they chose language, like, I don't know.
Yeah, so our current seniors is the last group of students that had the opportunity to Latin at the middle school.
Yeah, so I think, looking at some of the numbers that way, you know, like, what were kids doing during the craziest time of, you know, their schooling? So I don't know. That's sort of how I look at some of the upper level numbers for any of the languages, really, is that it was during those, they were making these decisions during, you know, hybrid or learning.
Well, um, if there's no further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I take eliminating classes is a very important discussion to have, and it's a very, um, important decision to make. So, um, you guys made some good arguments. I don't feel too strongly about, about this, about, you know, the, the Latin part of it. I think if, you know, if you guys feel that strongly about it, I'll, I can go along with it.
All right, so, should we take a vote?
We probably should, I mean, it's on the.
Yeah, you take a vote. So, okay, so, is there a motion, um, to approve a second read for, uh, PHS Program of Studies revisions for Latin?
So moved, and I'll put it out there to get it.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Okay, so let's, um.
So a yes vote would eliminate Latin. I just want to be clear about this.
Eliminate three and four.
A no vote, eliminate Latin III and IV, a no vote would mean no change.
Yes, okay. So, uh, should we do a roll call? Start with Mike?
Sure, uh, no.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay, ayes have it. So that is everything under the Education Subcommittee. The last.
Can I just make one small request?
Sure.
I would just ask you to please teach sign language, actually a fun language.
I'd love to. The last thing is under policy subcommittee, in your packet, you have policy section G for a second read and approval. We did it as a first read back in December.
So I have a request on this to, to my colleagues, right? There's a bunch of new stuff in the back. And candidly, I just didn't have a chance to get through it all and to do the research that I've wanted to do on some of the newer stuff. Would it be at all possible to table this until our next meeting, or would you guys be against doing that?
What do you think?
I'd be in favor, honestly, I agree with Patrick.
Okay. Just a reminder, you did get in in December.
No, I know, I know we did. We've been a little busy, just to be clear.
You're having our timeframe, okay, though?
You're fine, yeah.
Are these all, these were, the new ones, these are all M E S C?
Yep, they're all.
Yeah, but they're brand new for us and I like, I had questions, I started looking at it and I just wasn't able to get through them all, and I apologize.
Alright, well, our next meeting is February thirteenth.
Yep. We'll have the budget presentations from technology and visual and performing arts study thing in addition to other.
Okay.
And I'd like to have the, whatever it looks like, data for history of the use of Titan's Talk. Like if there's how many, you know, because it looks like it's a Google form, so is there data that's collected on just, like a discussion just on?
So Titan Talk is an administrative tool, it's not a, the content of it isn't.
Well, not, not the content, but just like the, like.
Like how many parents' kids have used it?
I also, I, I, I don't know if this is what you're gonna add or not, but it's come up a lot, right? So it's like, where is it? How do you use it? How would you submit something? It might be just good to get out of the.
Yeah, so the first few years of the platform, it was Let's Talk, which was a, a purchased service that we were using. Obviously, we in-house it, I think, four years ago and changed the name to Titan Talk. But I will bring you as much data as we own in-house that we share.
Yeah, just more like if there's been five in the year, I don't know, just, you know, it doesn't have to be like one.
So maybe we put that as an agenda item and then just talk about, you know, the, you know, just the history, we'll go over everything, so everybody's gotta, if that's okay with everybody?
Sure, I'm fine with that.
We'll do that for the next meeting. Alright, so if there are, I don't know where the microphone went.
Yeah, go ahead.
One fact check question, because there's been posting online about that process of these two schools being unsuccessful. There was told there's no building that handles public school. I'd like to make sure that that, because I like them, but I like them for a fact.
Oh yeah, no, that's not true. I wish I could say that it is.
I promise you it's not true.
Yeah, I think the reference, you know, though, social media is not a platform that we use to officially communicate. I think the reference was to the two incidents that Mark alluded to, having been reported at the high school in relation to the conversation around the, any wall adornment. And he had received two parents' complaints in his years at the high school.
That's right, I'm not too sure what you're talking about, but. The question was asked of me was how many complaints have there been brought to me about the five flag?
This was something posted, say, they asked two school committee members and they said there was none. So, I, look, the answer is no, and obviously this, I'm not relating it any further.
Yeah, and just for, just for edification purposes.
I know you are.
There is a bullying, bullying prevention plan that we follow. There's state reporting that's required as well. So, you know, we do report instances of bullying to the state, but there are many occasions over the course of a school day or school week that our building principals are investigating alleged bullying. So there's, I wish it wasn't happening, but it is.
I respect all that you do, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record. Thank you so much.
And again, like people can claim whatever they want on social media, you know, I mean, to be honest with you, they could, I, I, anyone could just say, I talked to four school committee members and they said this, I mean, you know?
Yeah, so I, you know, anyway. Moving on, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.